October is Domestic Violence Month.
Yes.
So I think the Women's Commission needs to do some, something. And what I'm hoping for today are suggestions for what we can do as a commission. So.
Sense about this, but if you want them, let me know.
Yeah, I do.
I think an event is important. I want to be seen participating in the community. I think we need to organize ourselves better first. We had some time off over the summer. You know, do, do we have bylaws? Do we have help when you're not here, you know? A vice chair committees, I, I think in speaking with a couple of the others, I was like. You know, domestic violence is all well and good, but what are our three focus issues? I'm just making this up, right? Like healthcare, education, do we? Because I, you know, if we start doing real work. I, and this is just like how I've learned to maybe operate in politics. How do we find our niche, right? Like every cause is a worthy cause, you know, and I would hate to turn away a woman. Domestic violence needs help over here, needs help over here. But if we have our three to five causes and our subcommittee on DV that works with the District Attorney's Office, right? Like there's, there's ways we can organize ourselves to be effective. And I think we got off to a little bit of a rocky start. And of no fault to anyone else, right? Like it was a long summer. I ran for office, family's not well, like. I wasn't plugged in at all. So I think if we, I think an event is incredible way to launch ourselves in the community. And then I do think we need to spend some time this winter organizing ourselves appropriately.
Absolutely. And according to the survey, domestic violence. Domestic and gender based violence, girls learning about appropriate relationships, number one. Child care two, equality, equal pay, three. So that's.
Boom, from our own data, yeah.
Yeah, my own data. Yeah, well, I think that's why I wanted to have this meeting because. Obviously I wasn't able to get anybody together over the summer because.
How you doing over there? You okay?
Not really, because I'm not really quite sure. Everything's so up in the air. I'm really still not quite sure, but Danny was. In the hospital, he was in cardiac arrest, who's out of the hospital, in the hospital. I don't really know. Um, it's all up in the air really, um, with what's going on, but I think a vice chair is a great idea. And um, if no one else shows up today, I'm gonna appoint you.
We had quorum.
Yeah, we had a quorum, we took a vote.
I appreciate you. I was gonna nominate Zuma or someone, you know.
Yeah, let's see, let's see who shows up, but I think Ayana was, uh. Had called in to, uh, to join us, because yeah, because I really. I don't mind relinquishing it because I'm not sure how much I'm gonna be able to do.
Yeah, and I, can I be honest and say the same for myself?
Yeah, yeah.
I want to support, but I'm not sure I can lead.
Okay, so let me see if anybody else, because I, I'm, I'm looking over some of the things on a, uh. Yeah, national database and they say, you know, wear purple. Bring attention, give out ribbons, but I mean, we're really. If we have an event, we have to have an event that has an audience.
And I'm wondering if experts other than us, like, and I just keep using the DA, because that's the first thing that comes to mind, like. Is the Victims Advocate Unit, you know, do they have resources or? You know, I'm no subject matter expert, I truly try to think of like, okay, if something went wrong. And I need a DV help tomorrow. Where would I try?
That would be a great focus.
Who do I even call, you know, uh, what resources are, are available, like? And I'm like, maybe a blog, you know, but like, that's kind of, that, that's where my brain goes, like the communication stuff, you know, social media. But I feel like that's getting ahead of the game, whereas like, an event is more like. Educational, I don't know, I hear you on audience. Who would come? Would it be for school kids? Would it be for the public?
I don't, you know, we wanted to get into the, to, to schools and focus on, on. You know, like Mariah's situation where she lost her sister to domestic violence and when she was a senior in high school. But.
Are they doing anything? I know they had their walk.
Yeah, that's, it's kind of in May, celebrate. We've missed that. Maybe we could call attention to, I like that, maybe we could. With the, just with the domestic violence advocates. Do a press conference honoring them. And calling attention to the resources or something.
Exactly. If they say thirty percent of women in Hampden County face these issues, that we're like. Okay, we need to do something about this. So is the Springfield Women's Commission, we are committed to working with the DA.
Yeah. Need to do would really is pick a day in October, and I'm thinking later in the month to get us organized. Pick a day in October to do a press conference, the Women's Commission. With victim advocates and this is the information that people need to know. Something like that would be really good. I don't know who, who's in charge of victim advocates, but. Obviously, it's the DA's office, right?
Yeah, it's gotta be someone over there. And see if I can. Oh, I have a new, uh, job for the state.
Oh, good.
But it ties directly in Catering, the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women.
You're working for the Massachusetts Commission for the Status of Women?
Yes, I'm the Communication Inspector for the statewide advocacy body.
Oh, well then, what are they doing for domestic violence? Why can't we piggyback?
Thank you. Yeah. Do something. So we are in our data phase, so we are having a public hearing in Provincetown. I have to go across the state. And then another in Pittsfield, and then one in Lynn and one in Hampden County. But so we're doing a series of public outreach tours to gather the data. To be like, okay, women in Massachusetts are struggling with childcare, domestic violence, blah, blah, blah. We write the report and then we write the laws.
There she is. Hey Denise.
How are you?
How are you both?
Well, I, I, I'm a bit, um, well, not embarrassed, but I'm a bit frustrated that I haven't had the time. To bring together this great group of women, because there was so much enthusiasm when we first started. And I don't want October Domestic Violence Month to go by without the Women's Commission being visible. Having a presence, doing something, but I think gonna appoint you and Ellen co-chairs of the event. Cause I don't have time. I think that'd be great, because you talked about that Denise. I mean, I don't think anybody met in the summer.
No.
I don't, I know I couldn't. Yeah. And I don't think, I don't think we have enough time to like get into the schools and do a presentation. We were just kicking around a few items, um, Ellen has a new job with the, uh, Mass Commission on the Status of Women.
Oh, wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you. But so we were trying to talk about, you know, bringing it locally and I was like. You know, especially around something as sensitive as domestic violence, like, you know, I'm certainly no expert. If someone needed help tomorrow, who would they call? What resources could we amplify? And so I was just sort of Googling, I was looking up the District Attorney's site over here, and they have a whole page on DV resources. Um, I just dropped that in the chat, so you know, if we wanna do some sort of, of. Then event with them or cosponsor, you know, Cater and I were bandying about, they say, you know, thirty percent of women are victims of domestic violence and. As the Springfield Women's Commission, we su- support these resources, you know, wh- whatever, I'm just sort of making it up, but. Amplifying the resources of other subject matter experts that are really invested in this work.
Surely, and, and to, to start off, perhaps what we can do is to draft something. For distribution. So that it be ready for October the first.
I love that.
Saying that, you know.
Even do it later in October, I think, to give ourselves time.
The first of October to recognize this that month and who we are. And you know, at least to get something out there.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
It's a great idea.
So, um, they still do stuff at, at Putnam, right? Printing and stuff?
Yeah, they do. Um, it's a little more difficult than it used to be because the teachers not is, is, uh. Invested in the community as has been in the past.
Such great luck there. Yeah.
Yeah, of course, because he's from up, upstate Massachusetts. He, he also doesn't understand. The networking and importance of doing things for the city. So it's a little bit of a challenge, but we can, we can work around that.
Yeah, we definitely can work around it. So, yeah, well, Laura of like mine, we need. The Women's Commission needs to do something in October Domestic Violence Month. I think the easiest thing to do it is with an organized group. And the, you know, if we do, and it could be anywhere, if we do an event with the victim. What's this, a Victim Advocates Unit? I don't know if we wanted to honor them, or if we just want to introduce them to the community and say, these are that, what. What the Women's Commission is gonna do is let people know where resources are for domestic violence.
That would be my vote if I had one. And of course honoring people like that, you know. But I think, yeah.
What do you think Denise, they can honor, so it's kind of hard. I don't, I don't know their pros and cons.
I think that would be great. Um. I also think that perhaps, I know I have a PTSO meeting coming up with the parents on October the twelfth. Second Wednesday in October. So if we, if we can't, you know, put our finger on what we wanna do. We can use that, at least for, um. A place, we already got the place, the school. Perhaps we could, you know, have somebody give a presentation.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's what I had said to Ellen, and if we could go somewhere where there's already an audience. It makes it that much easier. We don't have to generate the audience.
Right.
Now, that might be, that might be a good thing, might be a lot easier to bring. What would that, oh, here comes somebody, uh, admit. Would that, would that be appropriate to, um. Bring in a domestic violence coordinator and to that group?
Yeah, or even one of the crime prevention officers from the police department, one of the female crime prevention officers.
I just did, okay, I, I did admit for Ayana, but I don't know where she is.
I see her coming on.
Hey, Ayana. I did hit admit. I don't know where she went. Usually people just, you came right on, right Denise? Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. There's none of these little things that say, says participants for.
Yeah, so she's here somewhere. Ayana is here.
You hear Ayana, because I thought I had admit. Maybe she's just on the phone.
No, well, she's there, she's just. She's, uh. She's not, her mic isn't on, her camera is, maybe she's getting settled somewhere.
Okay.
I'm there. It takes a little bit now, uh, with the recycling of the audio for some reason. Um, I've noticed that for about a year now. The recycle, so on my end, it's recycling itself to, to adjust the audio, so.
We can hear you, can't see you.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we are, I'm just to recap, and I know Ellen has to go somewhere at five. Ellen has a great new job. With the Mass Commission on the Status of Women, so we hope to piggyback on some of those events. But we wanna do something as a commission during October for Domestic Violence Month. And we're just coming up with some suggestions for that. I think the committee needs to be visible.
And Ayana, we had maybe, hi, good to see you. Um, we had debated, you know, whether it's our place to do something alone. And I had maybe mentioned, you know, collaborating with other community. Subject matter experts that might already be in this field, so whether it's a district attorney. Um, or, you know, doing something out of school. Um, I think it's just a, a good place for us to be to amplify the resources and expertise of others.
Sounds good.
Uh, you have any suggestions for what we might do?
I'm sorry, uh, um, you're, you're asking, you're asking me?
Yeah, I'm just looking for suggestions from the group. The Women's Commission might, might do.
Right.
Good to have a vice chair, and I think Denise and Ellen, did you still wanna do it, or is it too much for you with your new job?
I would nominate someone else if we could, but I am, I, I, and I mentioned, you know, we'd had a conversation amongst the others, I was like. And even over the summer, right? I ran for office, I've been a little unplugged, but I think we, we owe it to ourselves to get properly organized first. Committee, you know, use our data, and I think events are all well and good, but until we're able to do that, I think we really, um, you know. Should spend some time organizing and figuring out what's ahead of us.
Right, and I had a very unpredictable summer. Danny's health is still precarious, so. I think it'd be great to, Denise, we mentioned it before, I mentioned it to you, someone else that could come in and step in when I can't be there.
Yes, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense. Um, so I know we had a, a guest speaker at a previous meeting. Um, in terms of the work that she was doing in regards to domestic violence, and so. I don't know if that was still sort of on the table to kind of. Piggyback on some of the work that she's already doing and or collaborate with her. In terms of what she is going to be doing, and so it sounded like she was excited to even know who we are. To then perhaps work with us, so I think we already have someone sort of in the queue, if you will. That potentially could, you know, work with us, rather than sort of racking our brains, trying to clarify, especially because, you know, it's. Around the corner, we don't really have a lot of time to do any marketing and all that good stuff, so. If something's already being planned, let's just, um, you know, jump on the bandwagon with that.
But Denise, what, you were talking about an event October twelfth, correct?
Well, that's the, uh, monthly PTSO meeting for Putnam. And the reason I offered is because it, it is already planned. And it could, we could stare forward women. And as Ellen said, that's a wonderful reminder that we did already have. Who was willing to work with us, and so we could turn it around so that, if she was in agreement. She could give us the, a small presentation on domestic violence and, you know. The other thing is if we wanted to, I don't know what color is associated with Domestic Violence Month.
Yes.
Purple.
It's always been purple, yes.
Hundred percent right, and I didn't know that. If we could do like a flag raising. On October the first or thereabouts, I know it's kind of soon, but. Just did a flag raising and possibly acknowledge her for her works in the field.
There you go. If we're gonna honor anyone, I'd rather it be real women.
Yes.
Right, yeah, right, of course.
Yeah, that makes sense. I don't remember, I don't remember her name. Who was it that we, that we worked with?
It was the woman that you had invited at your, at.
She spoke at the City Council, yeah. Came to the City Council Public Speak. I'll, I can look it up.
You can look it up, it's in minutes over there.
Uh, yeah, I'll have to find out the, um. Regulations for, uh, Domestic Violence Awareness. And we could, that might not, that might be a, uh, an easier thing to do, a flag raising. And then we could just invite people to City Hall and they could speak at that.
Yeah, that might be nice, but you know.
That doesn't, that doesn't really get any of the resources out there. I kinda liked the idea of having somebody from the, uh. Uh, um, Victim Advocate Unit sharing resources.
Well, they can certainly come and do that. It's not, I don't.
Well, that's true, so they could come and speak at the flag raising.
Right, right. I don't think that would be prohibited from them to do that.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but, um, October first is just.
Looks like.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking October first, ah.
Yeah, that's like.
It's like right around the corner.
It's in.
And then, and then we could invite obviously all the members of the Women's Commission so that they could be visible to the community again.
Right, well.
We always get turnouts for flag raisings.
Yeah, so October first is Saturday, and then the following Monday is the third. So potentially it could be that Monday, or it could be the Friday, which is the tw- thirtieth.
Yeah, I kinda like the idea of. Monday, October third, that would still give us time. To invite, you know, the Springfield Women's Commission, the City Council Office could send out invitations for people to join us at. The, uh, flag raising. Of domestic violence.
Right.
Over third.
Then we just need to clarify who has the flag. Used, do we have sort of that, you know, sort of in queue, well, because that is.
Do we have a flag?
Right, that's a question. So do we have a flag? And what is the official flag? Because we wanna make sure we have the appropriate official flag as well.
Yes.
Always these versions of different flags, and, and we've been through that on multiple levels, so.
Oh, my god.
Yeah.
What kind of a flag can you raise? That's the other thing. I can remember we wanted to do this for the, for the Women's Commission before, and we ran into some issues.
Right, and that's what we would have to clarify with the city, and then we can look at the National Domestic Violence to see what flag is used. And then the city could order it, so City Hall, the mayor's office could order it. Um, you know, like tomorrow, if, if you wanna give them a call and say, okay. You know, and then sort of move forward with that, because we'd have to get the podium, we'd have to get the microphone, we'd have to get, you know, all the bells.
Well, all that stuff would be easy, it's just to get the flag.
Yeah, so we just need to find out what the flag is. I don't know if anyone can look up real quick, to see what the national.
Just gonna say, I'm trying to do some Googling.
Okay, good, because once we determine that, the city, I'm, and I don't even know if anyone would have.
This is what I have seen.
Can't see.
Purple ribbon?
Definitely can't see that, sorry.
Yeah. Can you see it now?
No, ma'am.
It's like blurry.
Very blurry. We just need to have, if you wanna share your screen, if someone has a, a way to go on your computer and share your screen, you can share that.
That's actually on the portal.
Okay, yeah. Let me go through, let me see. You can, okay, great. Gives her sharing rights, that'd be great.
This is what I'm seeing. Do y'all see this?
Um, not just yet, almost.
Any variation of this.
One, okay. And so, but we still need to clarify what is the National Domestic Violence Flag, right?
See one uniform thing, it's other, um, I was clicking through. Okay, appears to be other municipalities, each with their own flavor. I don't see one particular brand or like state approved image.
Okay, okay, okay.
Recognizable.
Okay, good.
Okay, and I will find out, it, you know, if it's appropriate to, to do that type of a flag raising.
Right.
Yeah, if not.
We don't want the law department, you know.
Well, yes, I, I remember something that, you know, we had an issue. When we tried to do it, but this was a while back, we had an issue, but. Um, that would just make it so much easier to do that kind of a, uh, an event. Just, because there's a limit to the people you can invite and have them speak and stuff like that, you know? We could even have a little reception in, in City Hall afterwards if we needed to.
Okay, so let us look at you finding that information out. Target date would be Monday, October the third.
Yeah, right, and what time would be appropriate?
Eleven?
Yeah.
Well, we can suggest that, and then let's find out what the mayor's calendar looks like too. Cause I'm sure he would like to be there.
Yes, so I have to, isn't it funny? Who do I call to find out if we can raise the Domestic Violence Flag?
How about Tal Y G?
Yeah, from the Law Department, that would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, that, and then of course DPW, you know, they would probably be, you know, helpful in that regard as well. And then any local organizations for domestic violence in the city.
Right. And somebody from, somebody from the, uh, Domestic Violence, uh. Yeah.
Yeah, I could reach out to the Y, um, CEO from there, the Y. M's, no, Y W C A. I can reach out to, um, to the, to the CEO there.
Is that still, um. Who's the CEO there? Still the same one?
Yeah, yeah, it's still the same one. She used to be the DA.
Yeah, I'm.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know who you mean. I, I know her husband, Steve, yeah. Yep. Okay, well, these are all good suggestions, and I will get, get back to you either through an email or whatever. And then we will send, if we know we can do the flag raising, I'll have the City Council send out a notice to the Women's Commission. That we're planning this event for. Monday, October third, what works better for you guys? Ten, eleven?
Eleven is fine.
Eleven.
And do we wanna get the legislators there too as well, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's no, with a, uh, uh, flag raising, there's no limit to the people you can invite. You just would wanna not have eighty-five speakers, you know? I know I've stood there for a long time sometime, yeah, listening to people speak.
I think we all have, right?
Yeah, so we'd wanna have like a featured speaker or, or, or somebody, you know? So I, I like that idea, and then from there, we could go on to plan something more formal. That we could generate a, a, uh, audience ourself, because I know we talked about targeting high schools. Coming in and speaking to, uh. Uh, what's a good relationship and what to look out for in a relationship and so forth.
What time?
Eleven AM, is that what you said?
I said eleven, yeah. Yeah, okay, well, that sounds good. Well, nice to have a committee of four. And Ayana. This will be good, because I'm not sure, you know, what my, what my schedule is. I haven't actually been to City Hall in a long time.
I thought Ayana was here, because I didn't know half of those logistics, so that was.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm glad you're here, because I didn't know half of what those logistics would be to pull that off, so.
At the flag. What was that, what was that website? I can just, if I'll find out tomorrow if we can do a flag raising, I'll order the flag.
Yeah, Googled it, National Domestic Violence Flag.
National. Okay.
My volunteer is paid off.
Good, 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 good. You know, when I was first on the Mass Commission for the Status of Women, which was the inaugural committee, we did hearings all across the state. What the, that's kinda like what you're doing again, find out what the issues were. Transportation, I remember was a big one.
Hasn't changed.
Yeah, that's a few years back too, so, okay, this sounds great. I will find out. I will send out an email. And you, I, I don't believe, um, I don't know where Denise went. Ayana, did you work with Thea Kastanakis when she was on the Women's Commission?
Um, I don't remember her, I remember Kathy.
Okay, um, Denise, you, you remember Thea Kastanakis, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, her mother just passed away.
Oh, no.
I, you know how close they were.
Hmm, hmm. Why shouldn't it?
Send a condolence from.
Sorry, yeah, definitely send a card to her.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, Thea was on the, uh, former commission and she was in, um. Worked in the philanthropy department of Bank of America. And was very generous to the Women's Commission. And sponsored our events. Yeah, so. And, you know, mother were tight.
At some point, we, we also need to. In one of our functions, to make sure that we light a candle or acknowledge. Um, our members who have gone on because. You know.
Because we lost Arlene Putnam.
Yeah, and that was a great loss to us because she was a wonderful individual.
I remember being with her at, one of the things you were doing at Putnam when you first started that dress, dress for success thing.
Yeah.
We were down there sorting out gowns or.
Yeah.
And you had boxes of shoes and everything to put together. Yeah.
Right.
Yes, whatever we suggested, Arlene, she was the manager of the Eastfield Mall then.
Yeah.
She was a huge, huge help. So.
She was, uh, and to, thinking about dress for success. We definitely should get in line with, they still exist and they are out there at the mall. Um. Maybe to do, you know, that could be something that we could do a clothing drive or something for them. Because a lot of those women are touched by domestic violence, which is why they don't have clothing and things that they need.
Well, that's a good idea. That's a very good.
Those are things that we could do without having, you know, it's not heavy lifting. We could. You know.
I like that.
Picking back. And deliver them to them.
Yep, sounds good.
We're not taking the clothes in ourselves. We're not doing anything other than putting our name.
I like that very much. Okay, okay. All righty, so, all right, I'll be back in touch with you guys. How's, uh, Brandon doing?
He is very.
I'm gonna jump off. Be well.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
For your suggestions. I know you had a five o'clock.
Talk to you soon. Okay, talk to you soon.
Yeah, so much, uh, uh, Denise's grandson, is he still at Quantico?
He is. He graduates January the 6th.
Oh, okay. Oh, what a time to go to these two, uh, Virginia.
I know, but I'm forward to it.
Oh, it'd be a beautiful ceremony.
Oh, yeah.
You tell him, I've got his picture in my living room.
I will tell him. I sure will.
Yeah, 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 okay.
From the, um, Stone Soul Committee for his community service.
Oh, how nice. Wonderful. I didn't, you know, I missed Clendy for the first time in years. Stone Soul. Yeah. And, and the Puerto Rican Parade, uh, just because of Danny's condition, which changes every day. Um, I just haven't been able to get to things. So, all right. But glad, I feel good seeing you guys getting back on track.
Absolutely. And I wanted to. I wanted to mention one thing before we end. Um, that I think one of these months, we should talk about women's health.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think that's a critical piece now moving forward.
I like that.
Um, so something around women's health, maybe get, you know, Bay State. Um, you know, involved in something, or we could do something there at Bay State. But something around women's health.
Which would be easy to do with Kathy Tobin, our former commissioner could.
Exactly.
Something, yeah. I like that.
For sure. And, um, they did something last year called the Face of Faith, Ayana, and. I think that, um, we should talk to Timothy Jones and maybe have her come and address our meeting. But definitely put something together for women, around women's health, around. Those, those cancers that nobody talks about. Everybody does talk about breast cancer, but. The cancer, no one talks about, the heart. You know, a dear friend just passed away last night of having a blood clot.
Oh, dear.
Oh, dear.
Yeah, she's 49, not, not quite 49.
Oh, awful.
Oh, wow. Did she, did she even know the symptoms or, or just?
I don't believe so. And that's what I'm, you know, you see what you're saying is what I'm talking about.
Right.
Strokes, you know, a couple of people I know have recently had strokes. You have to know those signs.
Right.
Oh, if we just took one of those things on as a mission. That would be fantastic, especially around the holiday season when families are coming together and.
Hmm.
You know. Talk at the table. That's a good one. Talk at the table.
Yeah, talk at the table. Maybe we could create that. You know, talk at the table about, you know, women's health or, or just in general. Because like you said, Denise. You know, those silent killers, you know, those underlying issues, right? My mother passed away from stomach cancer. Who would have known?
Oh, my gosh.
And we got the diagnosis in August. She was gone in February. You know, and I just couldn't believe how quickly it just metastasized itself in her body with the lymph nodes. You know, we had to do the surgery. We took out most of them, but they still were there. You know, we had to get her on a feeding tube. It was just unbelievable, you know, and, you know. It's so bad. And so absolutely, and my mother was a nurse, so anytime those doctors and nurses came into her room, she was always questioning what they did. And helped me and my brother question them every step of the way so that we could be clear. On what is happening, right? And I think that's another thing with families that they're afraid, right, to ask. Because they think that they don't know. And really, we know more about our family members than the doctors. And we have to feel empowered. You know, I know for me, we knew about what my mother ate and what she didn't eat. How, you know, uh, types of medications that were good for her that weren't good for her. She had a very sensitivity to smells. She had a sensitivity to doses of, of the painkillers. So if you gave her too much, she would react. You gave her not enough, you know, so there were just certain things that. You couldn't have just a standard way that when you come in, okay, everybody gets the same. No. Everybody is different. And we made it clear, you know, um, so anyway. I think also helping families advocate for their loved ones. You know, not to be afraid of the transitions that happen with your family members. That, you know, and whatever your faith is, whatever you believe, that you have a right to believe that there's someone or a higher power that's going to help you through that. And I think that's important because we didn't have that. You know, and it was stressful, very difficult, but. Because my mother was a nurse. We were able to be, uh, educated about what she needed. And she helped us through that process, even though she was going through it.
I love that. So talk table. Women's health, reaching out about advocacy, health history and trans. And there's so, that can be done in, in all of that. The advocacy part. Talking to those doctors, having, uh, having a person who is your, um, the health proxy.
Mm hmm.
The health, making sure that we know what's in our family's health history. And then transitions, making sure that you're prepared for when a loved one leaves so that, um. GoFundMe doesn't have to be the place or just know. You will be in pain for a long time, but there is a place of remembrance. So I love that. I love that. I love that. I, I really do think we could, uh, forum, a workshop on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Workshop. And I know, you know. Danny has been at least three hospitals. And, uh, three rehabs since July.
Wow.
It's just, all different ones, as in if you are not an advocate. For the person that's there.
Your loved one gets it any kind of way.
Exactly. And, uh, yeah, you, you gotta speak up. Uh, at, at a lot of these places to make sure that they don't just sit there. Uh, and that they take care of. You know, when Danny was at, the last time at Bay State, he was in a, he wasn't even in a, he was in a hallway for two and a half days.
Two and a half days?
Yeah, two and a half days in a hallway.
Listen, that's a reality right now in all of. The major hospitals, but Bay State especially. You know why? Because people use Bay State as their primary care doctor. They don't use it for emergencies. And so those of us who go down there with something really. Weird, two, two days in a hallway. Or three, uh, worse stories about people. In hallway.
It's a terrible thing to do to people. You know, that's why I said, guys, you can't do that here. This is a hallway.
Right.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
So, yeah, there's a lot to be said for, for healthcare. So, well, hey, thanks for joining today. It's good to see you. I feel, I really feel like we gotta get started because it's such a wonderful group of women.
Yeah.
You know?
We need to be able to report back to the city, but we're, we're set for October the 3rd. Ayana, let's think some more about talk at the table. And try to flesh that out a little more. And maybe let's. Let's look at. Um, if not late. January, then early, I know Black History Month is. February, we could, we could put it into Black History Month if you want it, but. Um, it's the, the month of love. And so what better way to love on each other than to talk at the table?
Yeah, I think it'd be great to have the Women's Commission be part of that. The other thing I wanted to do is I think we should go to a. Uh, Springfield Central Girls Basketball Team game as a commission. Because then they're number one in the state.
That would be great. And then you all can come to a Putnam game, too. But no, I.
I think the Women's Commission should do that. I actually want to go to one of the, uh. Springfield Central Boys Games because, uh, I don't know if he's a quarterback, but that William Watson.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, he's committed to Nebraska.
That's nice.
Oh, wow.
You, uh, do, do you know that my, my daughter-in-law teaches at the University of Nebraska?
No, did you tell Watson that?
I told his uncle and I spoke to his mother, but I wanted to, I wanted to go to a game and meet them because. My son, Michael, who lives in Nebraska, he wants to invite him over for dinner.
Oh, that's nice. That'll be really.
Yeah, and she thought that was great. There could be a local connection there, but they're all, they're, yeah, my grandchildren wear those cone heads and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, go to those games. But I wanted to see one of his games.
Well, for sure. And, and we definitely have to tell the DJ when you get there. Who you are so they can announce it.
Well, yeah. Great if the commission, do, you must have, do you have a schedule for those games?
Say it again?
There must be a schedule for those games.
Yeah, you just go onto, um. The MIAA. Uh, website and they have, they have all the games for all the schools on there.
Okay, yeah, I think that'd be great, if we could, we could go to one of the.
Support those, and support the both teams all over because. You know, they're part of the women's, you know, part of the.
Danny and I went to a game at Putnam, remember? A long time ago. You brought us to it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I enjoyed it. Well, sounds good. Sounds good. Ready to get back in the saddle.
All right. So we'll wait for you, Kateri.
Uh, yes, you will. I'm gonna take care of that first thing in the morning.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you, ladies.
I have to take care of my catering and happy birthday.